Good evening and welcome to the September 22nd, 2020 meeting of the Planning Commission. I call this regular meeting to order. Staff, will you please conduct the roll call?
Sure. We have with us Commissioner Feng.
Present.
Commissioner Takahashi.
Sorry.
Chair Moore.
Present.
And at this time, I see Commissioner Saxina, oh, Vice Chair Wang.
Present.
I show Commissioner Saxina absent at this time.
All right. Thank you. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. The governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance. The city has met all of the applicable noticing requirements. Members of the public may offer public comment by email to planning@coopertino.org prior to the close of the public comment period for each agenda item. Staff will share all such comments with the commission and make them part of the record. And we begin with item one, approval of the minutes. Subject: Approval of the draft minutes of August 25th, 2020. Recommended action: Approve or modify the draft minutes of August 25th, 2020. And I had one brief comment that our meeting minutes say that we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we haven't been saying the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of the meeting. So that would be one, perhaps correction that we would have there?
I'll remove it from the templates until such time as we resume.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
If you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to move that we adopt the minutes as presented.
Okay. I second that. Madam Clerk, will you conduct the vote?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Wong.
Oh, approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Feng.
Approve.
Commissioner Takahashi.
Approve.
And Chair Moore.
I approve.
Okay, thank you. The minutes are approved, 401 with Saxina absent.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, we move on to a study session. Item two, subject: A study session and presentation on the transition from level of service to vehicle miles traveled, VMT, for determination of transportation impacts under CEQA, a change required by Senate Bill SB 743. Recommended action: Receive the presentation and provide any impact, any input to staff. Start with our president.
Good evening, Chair Moore. I'd like to introduce Chris Corral from our Public Works Division to help with this particular study session item. Hi, Chris.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Did we skip oral communications? No, were there none?
That's interesting. Oral communications tonight is put after item three, the postponement.
Interesting. All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. This evening, I would like to provide a brief overview of the project this evening, which is the implementation of SB 743. Really quickly, a little background. SB 743 was signed in 2013 and becomes effective on, or became effective July 1st, 2020. And the law fundamentally changes transportation analysis under CEQA. Until now, level of service has been used as the metric to do that analysis. And the new metric is VMT, or vehicle miles traveled. Basically, the one way to look at that is that LOS is measuring the impact to drivers, where VMT is measuring the impact of driving. Until this point, we've been participating as staff in the process by working alongside other agencies in the county with VTA. They've led a working group called LOS to VMT Working Group. We've been participating in monthly meetings for about a year, working on developing a countywide tool with the county that each agency can use as a tool that planners will actually use as projects come in, and also to align in the common interest of a smooth transition, being that this is such a big change. We intended on completing this process last spring, but with COVID, we were delayed, and now we're just getting started. This is our first public meeting in the process before going to council. With that being late, we're tracking along with many other jurisdictions in the county and the state being late. So we're in good company, and the Office of Planning and Research from the state is allowing us to use ad hoc VMT thresholds until we adopt permanent ones. So with that, I have our consultant team with us this evening, and Dan Rubens of Farr and Peers will be leading the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the commission. I'm Daniel Rubens with Farr and Peers Transportation Consultants, and I'm joined by Julie Morgan and Teresa Winery, and they can help with questions should they come up towards the end of the presentation. So what I'll do is share my screen here. Okay, so this is meant to be a presentation to kind of introduce the topic for the city of Cupertino's Level of Service to VMT Vehicle Miles Travel Transition Project. We initiated this at the beginning of the year, and we're intending to finish at the end of this year. So there's a few topics that I want to cover here. Answering the question of what is VMT? Providing an overview of Senate Bill 743, and then highlighting two lead agency decisions, VMT thresholds and VMT mitigation actions. And then transitioning from kind of a CEQA context, California Environmental Quality Act, to more citywide multimodal transportation planning analysis. And then Chris will provide a summary of the next steps. What is vehicle miles traveled? It is one vehicle traveling one mile is one VMT. So four vehicles traveling 10 miles would be 40 VMT. That's the basic calculation for vehicle miles traveled. This is a screen capture of a very short video that goes into a bit more detail about vehicle miles traveled. And if you'd like, it will be a part of the city's website for video, for access. So an overview of Senate Bill 743. Seven years ago, Governor Jerry Brown signed into law Senate Bill 743, and it had two legislative intents. Think of these as the goals of this legislation. The first is to change how we identify environmental impacts for transportation as a part of the California Environmental Quality Act. The second is, and the reason for that change is to align with state goals for infill development, active transportation, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So this is, as Chris kind of presented at the very beginning. In short, Senate Bill 743 is the change in the focus for transportation analysis from measuring the impacts of two drivers to measuring the impacts of driving. So that's kind of the fundamental kind of concept here and the change that's occurring. So what does Senate Bill 743 do? It removes level of service from determining a significant CEQA impact. So we can't use vehicle level of service in a CEQA analysis, an environmental impact analysis. It recommends VMT as the most appropriate measure for transportation impacts. And it also has some other considerations for transit and non-motorized or active transportation. But also, it doesn't really change anything else. So the processes that you're familiar with for planning, design, and development review, those remain the same. The only change is related to transportation and the CEQA process. There isn't a change for your general plan or your congestion management plan processes, although I will note that your general plan has several policies that I'll highlight later in the presentation that, as we go through this process, we will revisit or look at your multimodal analysis approach. So part of this project will be to identify, once you've adopted your VMT thresholds, what is your multimodal analysis approach as well? Senate Bill 743 does not change the CEQA disclosure standards, so providing facts to support the decision that you make for environmental impact analysis. So Senate Bill 743, it's been seven years, and several things have happened, and we're still in the process of implementing Senate Bill 743. So the signing into law of Senate Bill 743 set the intent and goals, the direction, if you will, of this change. One of those, part of Senate Bill 743 was to direct the California Office of Planning and Research to update the CEQA guidelines. It's a set of legal requirements for determining what's an adequate environmental analysis. It's the rules, if you will, for the CEQA analysis. And that was finished in December of 2018. At the same time, California Office of Planning and Research developed their technical advisory. And it's their advice from the state perspective of how to implement CEQA relief for specific project types that are supportive of state policies. So projects that are infill development, active transportation, or reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So that's the overview. We're in the process, with city staff, your council, and this group, of considering a number of lead agency decisions. And we will have more supporting material to go with this, a white paper and several other documents. And in November timeframe, a study session with city council. But there's four major lead agency decisions. The VMT metric, the VMT method, the VMT threshold, and mitigation. The VMT metric and method are very technical in nature. The metric is what is the accounting method that would be used to define VMT? Because, believe it or not, there's actually more than one way to define VMT. There's VMT method. That is the selection of a travel model to establish the threshold and to use for future analysis. So those are two very kind of technical aspects. So what I want to focus a little bit more on today are the VMT threshold and mitigate, the technical component to it, but also kind of a policy element. And they very closely relate the VMT threshold and mitigation. So in these next two slides, there's a bit of detail, I'll admit. But the main points that I want to make, and I just want to introduce them, and then I'll go into a little bit more detail here, is as the city considers its options for VMT threshold, it can consider additional reduction. As you take more VMT reduction, there would be less VMT added to the roadways, to the street system. As you take more reduction in the VMT on the roadway system, you would need to apply more VMT mitigation. So keeping those concepts in mind, let's first focus on the VMT threshold. Now, the VMT threshold is the definition of what's considered acceptable or unacceptable VMT in an environmental context. So when you determine the potential effect of a project, what, this is the threshold you have to identify. And we can think of VMT as, starting point is, every day, VMT is generated by your residents, the employees in Cupertino, and your students. There's a total amount of VMT that's generated. If we divide that VMT by those people that generate that VMT, we get a project-generated VMT rate. So when we're talking about establishing a threshold or determining what potential reduction may be needed from existing project-generated VMT rates. And there's a number of options. We're in the process of actually doing the VMT modeling. So I'm presenting these kind of in general terms. We'll have more specificity in the months to come. So if we start with just the first option, a 0% reduction, that is saying that the rate that you generate today would be the rate that you would generate in the future. So as you add employees, as you add residents to the city of Cupertino, you would have the greatest amount of VMT growth on your local city streets. So as you take a reduction in the VMT generation rate, you would see less VMT growth on your local city streets. And there's potential scenarios where, if you take enough of a reduction, you may not increase the VMT on your roadway system or potentially even reduce the VMT on the roadway system. So those are the basic concepts of the VMT thresholds and possible options and outcomes for those thresholds. So transitioning to, from thresholds to the mitigation actions. And as I mentioned just a moment earlier, that as you take more VMT reduction, you would reduce the amount of VMT on your local streets. But that would mean applying more VMT mitigation actions. So those VMT mitigation actions really fall into kind of three primary groups. There's the transportation demand management. Perhaps you're familiar with this for an office project, where if you add commuter shuttles, for example, that's an option for the employees to take rather than driving. Site design would be bike-ped access, direct access to your local streets, your direct connections to bike and ped facilities or transit facilities. Regional policies. This is a relatively broad umbrella, but it focuses on land use policy and on regional transportation. So an example could be enhanced transit service, more frequent, higher-quality transit service. So if we think about the 0% reduction scenario, which potentially leads to the greatest VMT growth on your local streets, the VMT mitigation actions that would be needed to achieve this goal would primarily operate on the new city VMT. Right? So as you add office employees, there would be some reduction in their VMT rate relative to the city. But that would have a very small change in the amount of VMT on the roadway system. As we progress further down in these scenarios, we would have to apply additional VMT reductions to more of the VMT. For some VMT growth, the no-growth and reduced VMT, you have to apply to not only city VMT, but increase that to include all city VMT. So a TDN program that's applied to an entire city or several cities would require Transportation Management Association, the TMA, to fund and operate a program that would, say, for example, add community shuttles. Those community shuttles will be open to existing residents and employees, but also future residents and employees. So that's an example of potentially reducing existing VMT. Site design would be looking at your bike and ped system, increasing its connectivity and quality across your entire city, benefit to reducing existing and future VMT. The next two scenarios would require not only reducing VMT for the city, both new and existing, but also for the region. And for the, kind of the most impact, to reduce VMT on your city streets, you would have to have influence on VMT for your city and the region. So now I'm really transitioning from kind of the CEQA context, talking specifically about VMT, to more of a non-CEQA context, your system-wide transportation planning in the city of Cupertino. There's several policies in your general plan that, as we consider and develop VMT thresholds for implementing Senate Bill 743, we would also look at your city multimodal transportation analysis. There's three different ones, and I'll just highlight them. This first one is the clear direction to not only adopt a VMT threshold, but also look at level of service. Your city has a level-of-service D policy, as you know, in several intersections with LOS E+. And I'll call this a tiered level-of-service approach. There's also two other city policies to consider multimodal transportation analysis that align with state goals, but also to consider protected intersection policy. This is something that the city of San Jose has implemented. It is the concept of, perhaps there's intersections or a group of intersections in your city that you wouldn't add additional vehicle capacity to because it would have an effect on bike, ped, or transit facilities. And these might be located in specific areas of your city where you want to emphasize more of walking and biking and transit use. So to kind of wrap up the multimodal performance options, and my intent here is really just to present them, is we're going to work with city and staff and council on looking into several performance measures that you've used in the past, and perhaps they can be enhanced to be used in the future. Tiered vehicle level service is one option, where perhaps you have one or two different level of service standards depending on where you are in the city. Person delay. So that would be not looking at vehicle delay, but the person delay for each mode. Layered transportation networks. This would be taking your general plan circulation map and updating that to emphasize different mode priority. And level of traffic stress. This is a performance measure that was used in your bicycle plan, and that perhaps is another measure that we could consider moving forward as a part of a multimodal transportation analysis. So I'll transition the last slide to Chris to discuss next steps.
All right. Thank you, Dan. So to kind of summarize where we're going from here more broadly. So this, as I mentioned, is our first public meeting on the topic. We also just launched a website that's on Cupertino.org. And you can find it on the Transportation and Mobility page that has some educational materials on LOS to VMT. And we have our council study session that's tentatively scheduled for November 2nd. What's happening now is that the Farr and Peers team is running a traffic model or a travel model that VTA, that we have leased from VTA to get those numbers that Dan referred to. And then the other thing I just wanted to reiterate is that the city transportation staff generally finds level of service to be still a useful tool, and that SB 743 doesn't prevent us from continuing to use LOS. We just can't do so anymore under CEQA. So that's just something I wanted to mention. And then because of that, and because level of service is no longer permissible under CEQA, we'll have to bring back guidelines to sort of memorialize how we're going to use LOS. And then, of course, after our council study session, we'll have to take all of their feedback and put that into a resolution. And that's when we'll be officially transitioned from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. So we're hoping to wrap that up entirely by the end of the year. And for any projects that come in before then, we can use ad hoc standards that can be specific to each project. So that wraps up our presentation, and we're happy to take any of your questions.
All right. Thank you, Chris and Dan, for the presentation. And are there any clarifying questions from the Commissioners? Vice Chair Wong?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I think, you know, I understand the need to move to VMT. When you have infill development, you've got lots of density, and you're putting through a city through a bunch of road diets. I understand it is the law. Do we have any idea fundamentally what percentage of our residents are in vehicles versus mass transit? I mean, I was out campaigning for some campaigns the other days and literally watched, you know, oh my God, I've never seen so many empty buses in my life coming through. I mean, it's crazy. We got a VTA popping up with empty buses, like three people on the bus, like maybe one, maybe zero, right, coming through, whether it's Saturday, whether it's mid, whether it's peak. It's kind of crazy. So do we have a good sense in Cupertino, like how many people are in cars versus other forms of transit in terms of like mass transit or other things like that?
Dan, do you want me to take this one? The, I don't have an exact percentage, but I do know that Cupertino within the county has one of the highest drive-alone rates in Santa Clara County. The percentage is high. It's, I believe, the upper 80s and largely attributed to our land use patterns. Dan may, Dan Rubens may have more detail on that. You can nod your head if you don't, Dan.
Not the vigilance bar.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, Cupertino is in that about 85% or so automobile travel. The remainder, the 15%, is transit, walking, and biking.
Correct. Okay. No, I just want to make sure we know that because that is an important context when we think about how we use VMT and LOS. Because for us, right, for a lot of our constituents, right, it's, you know, they care about traffic flow and delay, and they care about those performance measures, and they care about, you know, reducing delay. They care about driver convenience. They care about volume-to-capacity analysis. They care about qualitative scoring, right? Those are still important to them. So I just want to make sure that's there and doesn't go away, given the number of folks that do that. The second question I have is if most of our residents are in cars versus other transit, and we are a bedroom community, LOS still makes a lot of sense. I understand it's law. Are we trying to get rid of LOS in any of our, in any of our rulings here? Or are we going to do both in parallel when we actually do an analysis? Because it impacts most of this community.
So we intend on continuing to use LOS. We just no longer can as part of environmental review under CEQA.
Understood. Okay. So there's no, there is no effort to get rid of any level of LOS in our analyses for planning purposes, urban, you know, urban design, you know, new applications? Will we continue to do LOS? Is that kind of what we're stating here? I just want to make sure we're clear there.
We will. Well, the difference now is that any discussion about LOS will have to relate to this new document that I mentioned that will describe how we intend on using LOS. So it will be different than it is the way we do it now in that we'll now also have to look at VMT for environmental review. So we'll be doing both.
And the clarification here is that we can't use automotive, automobile delay as a significant impact, right, in terms of discussion. automobile automobile delay as a significant impact, right, in terms of discussions. But we can also point out what that impact is, even though that's not required on a sequel level. Was that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right. Because getting rid of LOS is is bad for this community if we get rid of it, mostly because of the usage and the percentage of usage. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Actually, if I could comment in relation to that. You know, of course, today, traffic impact and mitigations for, you know, development or in the general plan, that normally is covered in the in the you know, in the EIR. So I'm curious exactly what you mean when when we say, well, we'll still, I mean, you know, what's happening is is the intent to quantify the LOS impact of a of a development? Because that's not normally the way that the mitigations have been generated.
I understand. I think we should quantify it. And I think the other problem is we're seeing road diets across the country create tons of issues. I understand there's a need for multimodal in dense areas. Makes a lot of sense if I'm in a city, right, having alternative multimodal transports in terms of bike lanes, in terms of bike lanes on material, right? But, you know, there's the studies are starting to show how these road diets are creating a lot of issues, and they've been using VMT as the excuse to, hey, let's do this instead. And given the commuter dynamics that we have and then the lack of mass transportation use, I mean, organizations like the VTA should, I mean, I'll be honest. I mean, dude, we should just give people Uber rides and reimbursements, given how much we're wasting on the VTA, and that money could be used for something else, because very few people are using it. And for those that need that, they should be giving some level of transit, but it's going to be significantly cheaper than running a VTA line that's empty all the time, right? And we're not thinking about those kind of things holistically. And so when people use those types of analyses to say, oh, VMT is great, you know, it's helping us, you know, with GHG, the reality is like we wasted so much money on mass transit that's not being used because it's not practical, not because it's not a great idea, it's just not practical. And that's really what I'm just bringing up here.
You know, I appreciate your input on that, but I was actually curious to get input from the city staff on that, on how they, what the intent is. I guess there's kind of a greater question here. What is the form? I realize that the project, you know, that the timing was delayed. And I realized that the, you know, the kind of goalposts are shifted outward in terms of deliverables. But, you know, what we aren't seeing tonight is we aren't seeing here as a draft of the changes that we would see. And I'm curious, I'm just curious to understand that a little bit. You know, what what is the way in which in which you know, for instance, well, you know, I guess I I guess what I would say is that on large projects, traditionally, the the EIR mitigations have been a guide to to the to what we look for in a development agreement, and that that would not allow, you know, those would not be LOS measurements in the future.
Yeah, so that's that's correct. So for a large project in the future, in the environmental analysis, you won't see level of service. That but that's just in the environmental analysis. As part of project review, you would still be seeing level of service that's related to this other documentation I've I've mentioned, the other way that the other way that will memorialize the use of LOS in Cupertino. And really, the decision that you're, I think you were alluding to in your statement that council, you know, ultimately needs to make, there's there's really four main decisions. But one of the the big one is the VMT thresholds that are set. Because that's really, that's that's the bar, right? And then the mitigations are what drives the the solutions to the to the problem, right? And the mention of road diets, I I definitely can appreciate the that that perspective and concern. But then also keep in mind that we can, you know, as a mitigation measure, we also have things like via Cupertino, the shuttle service and things like that. So so it's 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 meant to be, I think, a toolbox. Correct me if I'm wrong, wrong, Dan. I don't want to get too far off.
No, no, Chris, I appreciate that that's that's there. But nobody wants to take a shuttle or mass transit in a post pandemic environment, right? That's why you're going to see even more reliance on the automobile, not an anti car crusade that's been going on, right? And so there's a balance. And so when the VMT thresholds are set that impact LOS, there's going to be outrage, right? That that's the thing. We just want to make sure that the VMT thresholds actually reflect the LOS that we currently have and don't disintegrate the LOS that that could be going forward if we actually take thresholds that don't make sense. Because we're not an infill development. We're not dense. We're not all those things that make sense in larger cities. We're suburban bedroom community. I mean, that's that's the reality, unless people are trying to change that and well, you know, good luck there.
That's not the intent. We're we're not planning on doing, you know, what some communities have done in in very dense transit oriented communities like Santa Monica or Pasadena. I probably shouldn't name communities because I may be wrong, but there are some communities that are simply.
On San Jose did those as well, and they implemented those two to three years earlier. Now, that makes sense for them. I think they should do that.
So we are an infill community. There's there's no big green spaces are going to be developed, right? All development now is filling up spaces that are vacated and or redevelopment. So, you know, from that perspective, it comes the way this is structured. If it's if it's office, it's going to generate more VMT because nobody can afford to live near here. So you're going to have to commute in, and the transit is not good, therefore it's going to have high VMT. If it's a grocery store, you don't drive thirty miles to go to the grocery store. You go to the nearest grocery store. So that's going to have a lower VMT. So the net effect is it's going to show that offices are going to have a bigger impact, bigger environmental impact on our community, because it's going to drive higher levels of VMT. Now LOS, that's just going to be local, right, in in terms of the closer proximity to the development. But given there are no large scale developments, it's it's all going to be infill development. So from my perspective, that's kind of the outcome of of where this is going. It's going to disincentivize office development for because it's going to drive VMT. And I don't know how.
I would actually add Commissioner Takahashi, that would also disincentivize things like a Costco, where people are driving in for it, and destination locations where people would be coming in. If you've got tax generation areas, I don't know what's going to pick up post pandemic. Convention centers aren't going to be hit, but but something in that respect where you're driving people towards us to actually drive tax revenue, that would also increase the VMT. So I mean, it's not just office buildings.
Well, yeah.
We, excuse me, could we have either Chris or Dan weigh in on that? Because that's that's an interesting debate that you're having.
And do you mind chiming in on that one? And are you referring to the the Costco analogy, the?
Sure, and.
I'm using like a destination, yeah, like a Costco.
Well, well, office versus versus Costco, what, you know, where are you going to see the VMT change, you know, have an impact?
Yeah, I think it's VMT is already a challenging performance measure, and to talk in very general terms without, you know, completing the modeling is is a bit challenging here. So what I'll say is a pretty kind of general response is the city of Cupertino is certainly a city that if you add more office to it, you will increase your citywide VMT. If you add residential, you're likely to increase or decrease the VMT. The residential or the retail, sorry. It really depends on the type of retail that it is. If it is a a local serving retail, then it's likely not going to increase the VMT. But if it is more of a regional serving type of retail use, then it is likely to increase the amount of VMT. A Costco is a is a possible scenario for a regional VMT. So those, I think, are, when you think about individual land uses in the context of Cupertino, that's the likely direction of each. What is the net change with all of your land use changes over the next twenty years? We've we've got to do the modeling to know. And I think to kind of add just a little bit to the the discussion of when I presented on the VMT generation rate and the amount of VMT on the the street system, the amount of VMT on the street system, you can think of that as kind of a proxy for vehicle level of service. Right? So if the scenario works out that for to not have an environmental effect, say, for example, that you don't increase the amount of VMT on your local street system, then you have a pretty good sense of, I mean, you can go out and look to see what that condition is going to be on the roadway system, right? That's what that performance metric defines. Not sure if that's going to be the threshold that's established. You know, we've got to do the modeling to do that. But I just wanted to offer that as a, you know, a close connection to vehicle level service, not the same thing, but a relatively close one.
Okay, with regards to your, you had the threshold chart. And as you went down the chart, you got into having like regional mitigations. And, you know, how can the city of Cupertino have a regional mitigation if they wanted to to do that? I mean, it seems as though we kind of get stopped at, you know, the level three thresholds. And that beyond that, it's, you know, we're going to have to have interagency programs. Is that about right?
Yeah, I think you're you're on the right track. You know, VMT is, it's a metric that starts to make more sense at a citywide level or even a regional level to to have real effect, right? So as the region changes its land use mix, you know, more density and diversity, perhaps around transit, maybe not in Cupertino, but in other places. You know, as regional transportation infrastructure is enhanced, where people may take you know, something other than an automobile, those are all examples of potential reductions. So Cupertino would ultimately need to participate or likely participate in those kinds of reductions through new concepts, like a VMT mitigation bank or exchange. And if you've they are new topics, they are ones that need to be explored in more detail, will require regional participation. But that's how you would ultimately be involved.
Okay, so I was reading the Berkeley, Berkeley had a study on this, and they talked about the banks. And yeah, if if that's something that that you, you know, value as a document, could that be added to our education page? Because they had a nice couple pages of summary there. It it kind of scared me, actually, like you could have a developer say, you know, I'm I'm just essentially going to hand some money over here and and leave a nice big problem for you. But but that's how it looked. I hope it's not as as cynical as as that. Did you see it as something positive?
Was was this on the the city of Berkeley webpage?
Uh, yeah. Yes, they had a.
I'd be I'd be I'd be happy to take a look at it. And if it if it's if it's helpful, add it to our research.
Turner Turner Center, right?
Let's see, it was implementing SB 743 and Analysis of Vehicle Miles Traveled Banking and Exchange Frameworks from October 2018 from Berkeley Law. Yeah, it's it's like nineteen pages, and they had a couple of nice tables in there that if you like them, that that might be helpful.
And I'll I'll note in our white paper, we do make reference to that document and several others to really just kind of define and describe. Because right now, it's really what are the options, right? And that's that's what the purpose of the white paper is.
Okay, so is it is it possible that we could have a joint session since we've already had an introduction to this topic? I think that's something to that we can approach city council with. If we could have a joint session with them. And then it'd be great if we could have a draft copy of the white paper before it gets out, if you'd be willing to do that. You know, with draft written on it. And then I have a little concern because last I heard, we had like eighty percent of our employees travel outside of Cupertino, and then, you know, we've got eighty percent coming in. If that sounds, does that data point sound correct? And then what impact does that have on our sort of status right now for for VMT? I would assume it would increase it that we've and if our employees were all, you know, working locally, that it would be lower. So I just on a very simple basis, am I understanding this concept?
Are you referring to the city employees that are all employees?
All employees, so people who live in Cupertino, eighty percent travel out of the city, eighty percent come in to to fill the jobs that we have here locally. So that versus if they all worked here locally, what would the difference in VMT be?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a really good question. We we've discussed this. Dan and I have been discussing this. There's there's various potential scenarios for post COVID kind of resumption of normal travel patterns. Dan, do you have that slide that you could show as a backup slide in your presentation?
Yeah, I can do that. Second.
And while he's doing that, I would have to defer to the transportation manager regarding the the joint session, but I can certainly look into it. He's he's on the call as well.
I'm sorry, can you can you repeat the question, joint session with Commissioner and City Council?
Yes, since we've, since we're receiving an introduction, I was wondering if we could participate in and we'd have to ask City Council this, if we could participate in in a joint session, study session on this item in the future. I'm going to assume that they haven't had this introduction and that we're receiving it first.
That that's correct, yes. Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to entertain that. I would, you know, of course, need to have that discussion with the city manager, but but I do want to entertain that and bring that up, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, part of the reason I'm bringing this up, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Part of the reason I'm bringing this up is because these these, the VMT calculations are used to kind of, you know, over invest in transit where transit doesn't make sense, right? And you've seen this happen in cities where it's, oh, we need to increase transit service frequency. We need to expand the transit network, right? And when people aren't using it, especially in a suburban area, you know, that that's an area that 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 really doesn't make sense. It's another example Sacramento imposing, you know, ridiculous rules that don't really apply in some areas. And and that's really why that's reason I'm reacting to this is because, you know, we're seeing that, you know, happen in some of the areas. Have we figured out, for example, what we're using for thresholds, for example? Like, are those part of that white paper, or those are going to be discussed later?
That will be part of the discussion later.
Okay, got it.
That's the key part. And a lot of it.
It is.
A lot of it is impacted by what you're saying, the availability of transit. There's a, there's a whole host of factors.
And are we subject to any requirements from the state on what those thresholds are for residential, office, industrial, retail, mixed use, or public facilities? Is there some number that someone's trying to throw at us, like some, you know, quasi governmental authority like A-Bag trying to throw stuff at us? Or do we set our own?
We set our own. There were recommendations made by the state OPR, Office Planning and Research. I'm not a hundred percent certain if there's a minimum. Dan, are you aware if there's a, is there a complete flexibility for jurisdictions to set standards?
Be whether they're qualifying and disqualifying thresholds. I mean, that's the bigger question, I think.
Yeah, I think city of Cupertino is a lead agency, and as a lead agency, you're encouraged to develop your own thresholds using substantial evidence, providing facts to support your thresholds. So that's the process that we're going through now. And so the white paper is ultimately presenting different options. The OPR has presented a set of options that you may consider or may even adopt, but will provide the modeling to determine if that's something that's supportive, the city can achieve or not.
Wow, so you're using, you could potentially have cities having vastly different thresholds. Right? So you we could have a neighboring city, which, you know, is, you know, perhaps, you know, looking at San Jose, they, with regards to the intersection, protected intersections, I believe they they went with that. I don't know if it's for all or just certain ones there, but you could potentially have a city which has thresholds which are much more lenient than than ours. And then we're going to be impacted by their decisions. Is that correct? I mean, we always, we already got impacted by San Jose when they went to no longer considering driver comfort, which is pretty much what SB, you know, 743 is doing. So we already got impacted. In fact, there was in in their traffic analysis, they showed how how they, how many, gosh, it was how many miles of tra- of traffic lanes would be impacted by their EIR analysis all in the in the region. And you could tell that whatever they were doing, their growth plan was going to spill out into, you know, the neighboring cities. So I'm going to assume that 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 would be the case with VMT when people, when the cities decide their thresholds, that you could potentially have that same kind of impact. Am I understanding that correctly? And and do you and do you have an opinion about that? Rather than having like a regional threshold decision, what's the impact of having each city be able to decide their own thresholds? As and it's just, to me, I think it's just really odd because you have like the air quality from BACMED, you've got their thresholds for air, and it covers the whole region. But now you're allowing each city to it.
So that's a, that's a, I think that that's to some degree accurate. So that's a, that's a, I think that that's to some degree accurate, but I also think to some degree we have that today. It's just worded differently, right? Different communities like Mountain View or Sunnyvale may have lower standards or lower thresholds for development in different ways, right? They may be able to tolerate a worse LOS rating. And I think that this doesn't really change that. I don't think it would be politically feasible to get every community in the region to agree on a threshold. But what, what, what we did intend to do, or what VTA did, intended to facilitate with the LOS to VMT Working Group was getting consistent data among all the communities so that the way that the thresholds and projects are analyzed is consistent and fair. So that you don't have Sunnyvale saying, oh, we're only looking at data from 2012. And City of Santa Clara is saying, oh, we're looking at our 2014 MTC data. So, so the data is consistent across, but the thresholds will be different. And I think, I think what you're saying is, is correct, but I do think that that happens to some degree today. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan. Maybe you can't hear me.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
I agree. That's, that's been going on, we're talking about here. Actually, I want to reel back quite a bit here and, you know, we actually had touched on Costco, you know, the model of Costco, what's the impact of that. So I, I actually would, I would actually comment and you could, I hope you can affirm this. Relative to other land use, you know, retail will tend to be higher, cause higher traffic. A, B, there's also, you know, one of the things, and we've seen this, you know, we've seen this here in Cupertino. You know, office, particularly when it's a business on a large scale, an Apple or Google, has been much more effective at mitigation with TDM. You know, a land use like a Costco, there is no opportunity, a shopping center, you know, Valley Fair, there is no opportunity for mitigation there. So, you know, I would just kind of keep those in mind as well as it, as it has impact. You know, VMT does flavor what it is that you would, you would look at building down the line. But I, actually, I would just hope that, you know, I, I don't think that I've misstated the, you know, the common, the common knowledge about, you know, relative, relative use. And I also wanted to touch on, you know, San Jose. I had a number of questions that came back to how this relates to something, the kind of effort that was done in San Jose. But, you know, in San Jose's case, they're very interested in trying to capture commerce, not, you know, push it outward. So, you know, I think that, yeah, there's definitely going to be, there may be alignment differences that's, that come from, you know, come from, from a, you know, different focus on planning there. But, you know, their, their intention is try to internalize, you know, internalize traffic and internalize the the land use functions within the city. The problem San Jose has today is everybody leaves during the day, you know, costs them enormous amount of money. And then the last thing I wanted to say around thresholds, thresholds and regional thresholds, you know, I would find it very hard to believe that you could be compliant, just completely riding your own, riding your own threshold. But one of the things that, that does have to happen, I think if you want to have a discussion around things like banking, I don't know whether, whether VMT banking is something that's, you know, a great idea to look at or something that, because I'm not sure that that's legal today. But that does require, you know, there would be some, some level of seeing things eye to eye. You know, we saw that, we saw that as well with a number of the other traffic related, you know, both, both traffic and housing, you know, arena, regional arena pools and things like that. You know, you are going to have to come, at least see the eye to eye at some level for those to be able to work.
I had a question for staff.
Mr. Takahashi.
Yeah, so let's go back to Costco because it seems like an interesting topic for everybody. So the reality seems to me is by, let's just say we, there is a Costco that's added in our city limits. You're, you're increasing the Costco density in effect. And now myself, I tend to drive to the rank store of Costco. I avoid the Sunnyvale Costco like the plague. And that's on the order of eight miles that I drive. And now there's a Costco two miles away. That's a net VMT reduction of six times two or 12 miles for that impact. So this is, is the calculation taken into consideration proximity of adjacent same store? Does it take into account, does it assume same type of shopper density? Or, you know, how does that all work? Because the net effect might actually be a reduction of VNT miles because everybody in Cupertino is not driving all the way to Mountain View to go to Costco, right? So seems to me it's a little bit complicated and has to be really thought through actually how we do it. Because I, there's an argument that says, hey, put a Costco in and our VNT goes down and our sales tax revenue goes up. Win-win, so.
I was hoping for that, but okay.
I mean, I don't know about you guys, but yeah, it's, you know, they're far away from us right now and you still go, right? Or remember, still go, but, but now you would, you would be traveling a shorter distance. As would anybody else that's going to a Cupertino Costco would be driving less than they would be going to another Costco. How do you factor that into account?
Commissioner, it depends if that Costco has toilet paper in stock.
Very good point.
Great answer.
So I'm obviously joking, but, but it's, it's a really good point and VMT definitely is is a lot less concrete, right, than level of service. I don't know the answer to, to the question, Dan, do you, are you aware of what, what happens with the modeling when you have multiple, let's say, let's say Starbucks, let's give Costco a break, but, right? But still, it's a, the point's valid or a, or a health club, right? How do you figure that out?
Yeah, so there's, as I kind of alluded to in the presentation, there's actually more than one way to quantify VMT. And there's really two primary ways to disclose the potential effects of a project. First is the project generated VMT, just what does it generate, right? And typically as a rate, you know, how does it compare to the city or the region, right? So that's kind of the first kind of threshold. The other one is the concept that you, several commissioners have already presented and that's the project's effect on VMT. It's what is the net change in VMT on the roadway system? And a retail project is actually a really good example of, you know, a scenario where you may not actually be adding many new or much new VMT to the roadway system, you're just shifting it around. So this example of two Costcos, you build the third one today, you're going to shorten some of those trips. So the net effect may be a reduction, right? So there's several things happening at once, right? You know, you may be generating some new VMT, you may be redistributing new VMT. No longer go to the Mountain View Costco, you now go to the Cupertino one. And maybe if the project's big enough, you might shift traffic around in the nearby area. So the net effect is what we would be looking at with that kind of the project's effect on VMT. And that's really looking at how does the VMT change on the roadway system? So some analyses will be really simple. You might just have to look at the first one. So others that are more complex, you probably have to look at both, both under an existing condition and under a cumulative condition.
So Dan, in the example of banking, would, would the Mountain View, Rank Store of Costco and the law in Sunnyvale Costco calculations mean that those two cities would then pay us to actually put one in Cupertino if they want to keep building their density?
Probably not in that case. The concept of, of exchange and banking is, you know, if, if a project in Cupertino does identify that it's going to have an environmental effect, it's contribution of VMT is going to have some kind of environmental effect. It might be able to do things on its specific site, but then there may be other things somewhere else in the city or outside the city that would reduce, you know, the VMT for the region. So there has to be a mechanism to do that. And the analog is sensitive habitat, right? If you think about projects where you may have had to consider sensitive habitat, you know, if you're taking sensitive habitat, usually there's a requirement to build two, three, four times as much somewhere else, right? So it's a similar kind of concept.
Related to that, I have a question to staff. I believe the OPR statewide goal was a 15% reduction. So if a city were to submit 5% instead, is that not acceptable? So I'm just trying to understand like what's been going on. Everyone's been kind of like skirting it at like 10 or 13 or 12 or 11. And I've got, probably gone through like, you know, 17 presentations of this, so.
I think that we would have to be able to back up whatever number is chosen with data. So if, if the data supported that and the city wanted to go with such a, you know, a small reduction, then it would be possible.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Did we have any more clarifying questions from the commissioners before we open up for some public comment?
Yeah, I, I had two. So, so I'm curious, I've had, I've sat through the presentation in San Jose where they talk about this and there's a lot of focus there on directing, well, how would I say this? It would be the, the ease of, of getting approvals in priority development areas relative versus, you know, versus opening up new space or, or non-priority areas. And I'm curious whether the intent is to have a statement like that here. We identify, you know, for the purpose of, of, well, for planning purposes, we identify PDAs in Cupertino.
Yes, as you know, we do have a PDA in Cupertino. It's, it's really not our intent to go in with any sort of agenda to the next, to the study session with council and potentially planning commission council, however that works out. But rather this white paper that documents the options available and that could be an option that could be looked at, as could banking, right? Or it could be decided, maybe that's not for Cupertino. But the goal of this white paper is to really summarize and give data and support to all of these options. And so there isn't a sort of an idea that we would, you know, suggest PDAs should have, you know, different thresholds, but.
And I'm curious, I'm curious, of course, there's a context as well with Plan Bay Area 2040 is also, has something to say about this. So I'm curious how we, you know, whether we've looked at that and how we intend to align with that.
We have been participating in that process out really a bit separately from the SB 743 discussion. We've been involved in transportation planning activities at Plan Bay Area. We submitted for the Horizon Initiative, some kind of pipe dream ideas to have sort of this maglev circulator between Mountain View and Cupertino. And we're trying to stay engaged through all those planning processes to come up with transit solutions. But it, a lot of those discussions are, are really, I don't want to say pie in the sky, but they, but they are. And they're, they're such long-term that we haven't really had them in the context of this transition. But, but let's say in 50 years or 100 years, there were a maglev circulator, right? Then obviously we would, that would be a different, a different scenario. And that would be one of the mitigations perhaps is annual maintenance of the maglev circulator or something like that, so.
No, I, I understand. I think that the Horizon, the Horizon element of Plan Bay Area, you know, was attracting a lot of, you know, out of the box thinking. But then, you know, on the other hand, things like Rena are coming from this as well. And those are, you know, these are factors that are driving, you know, what the Rena allocations look like. So, so there is some amount of coordination, you know, that you would, you would need to look at. Otherwise, you know, then it will become, you know, even more unachievable than, than, than it is as presented.
I just, I had a quick question about, you mentioned COVID, COVID-19, and you had a slide that you were talking about. So you, you've looked, well, when you did your kind of, you had like regional meetings where you study sessions, coming up with some ideas. So was that before COVID or, or during? And so I'm wondering what's, you know, what's on your slide? What is it that you're thinking about, we're going to have, see as impacts that in the short term and long term?
Yeah, I was, I was hoping, Dan, were you able to find that slide? The, the, the VTA discussions all ended long before COVID happened. The VTA Working Group discussions. And then Dan had a slide, I think he's pulling it up now, that lays out some different scenarios based on their research for potential recovery. Maybe you could give a quick overview.
Yeah, and this is some research that we've done in the recent past, given that the pandemic's relatively new to us. Looking at kind of natural VMT recovery paths. And this is presenting several different possibilities of what could happen. You know, a scenario where we had our kind of from baseline 2019 conditions, you know, a pretty steep drop in the VMT that people were traveling and somewhat of a rebound. Actually, let me switch on. There we go. So a, a quick drop with the shelter in place order and then a rebound sometime after that. And then we're presenting several different scenarios of, you know, possible returns over the next one, two, three years, anywhere where there might be an increased driving in VMT. Perhaps that's a scenario where transit isn't as attractive. So the people that would have taken transit don't take transit, but they start to drive again down to a scenario where it's more home focused, right? Where 20, 30, 40% of the workforce population stays working from home. And then there's several other options kind of in, in between. Because this is not only, you know, a health aspect, there's an economy aspect to this, right? So, you know, this is really trying to account for those different options. This is a tool that can actually test a bunch of different scenarios. What you as the user might think would happen in one year, five years, 10 years. So this is just an example of the possible outcomes. And it also presents an interesting aspect of defining your threshold. Do you define it based off of baseline conditions? And then there's a permanent aspect of, of work from home. That's one way to, to potentially build in, you know, VMT mitigation action that's permanent, right? It's something that would occur again and again. So this is really, it's a scenario tool. It's really meant to kind of test what ifs, the direction, order of magnitude, that sort of thing. And these are some of the outcomes that we've presented on.
Okay, so, so we've returned to 75% of baseline right now. Is that correct?
Roughly, that's true, yes. We, we may be traveling for different reasons, right? So many of us are working from home or not working. But because there's now available space on the roadway system, we might be traveling for, for other reasons. More recreational, social in nature.
And we could be going farther because the freeway is clear, is that, is it possible? Okay, so it could be less of us going farther and, and maybe this, it's very complicated. But if you have less of us going farther, you could end up with the same total than a lot of us not going as far, right?
Yep, exactly. Because when we talk about VMT, we're talking about VMT across the entire day, right? Not just during the peak hours. We often think about those peak commute times, right? That trip that really is important to us to get to where we need to go to make some money. But, you know, this is VMT for all kinds of activities.
Right, right, okay. So, but I'm still, still, we see three out of four of these scenarios are below baseline.
Potentially, yes.
Okay, did you feel that this was pretty conservative, what you were showing?
Conservative, how, how would you define conservative?
Well, let's say the economy stumbles. It stumbles into 2023. You know, do you, do you have one that's, that looked at some, you know, really worst case scenarios?
Yeah, I mean, there is the potential to do that. It, it would, what it would look like would be, although I don't think we're presenting it here, is this stays flatter, lower for longer and then starts to come back up. So this kind of tail just occurs later in the, later in time.
Okay, okay. Because one of the things that I was wondering about is in, in making long-term regional traffic, transportation solutions, you know, it's great to think ahead. I'm just wondering, when, when would that make sense for having it implemented? If the traffic isn't going to return or, or when will it return? It's, it complicates, you know, what we're doing. And, and then there's also a question of where in the region you're going to have the growth bounce back. So where would it make the most sense to, to be looking for long-range planning solutions? So it's just, it's thrown a wrench into things. Anyway, are there any further questions from the commissioners?
I was actually just going to comment as well on that. Have you done a study of what peak? Have you done a study of what peak, peak traffic looks like in that kind of model as opposed to, you know, the entire day traffic?
Not that I'm aware of. We haven't really looked specifically at peak hour. It's already challenging enough to get daily information that the peak hour, we haven't. I don't think we've seen anything at this point.
Yeah, that's a very interesting, so first of all, I think it's a very interesting chart. You know, of course, the nightmare scenario is, is the one where, you know, all of a sudden you have, you know, because people are not taking mass transit, you know, you need 120% of capacity in an area where we were already, you know, suffering. So I think that that's really, really interesting, although, you know, of course, the distribution of when that happens does become a big factor. I also think, it would also be interesting, I mean, you know, because if you look at what ifs, you know, in a model where people, people work from home, that kind of can help, you know, that can help. And I think that really will be a long-term trend, but the interesting thing is, of course, many people choose not to do that from here then. So I don't know that then necessarily would benefit Cupertino, where housing costs are very, very high relative to, I don't know. I have coworkers who, you know, I had a coworker who just went back to Montana until, you know, until they need him to actually come into the office here. So it's, you know, you may see more of that. Thanks.
You'll definitely see more of that.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to our public comments. And I see Peggy, Peggy Griffin, you have your hand up. You got the timer. Hello, Peggy, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome.
Thank you. Good night, hello commissioners and staff. I would like to encourage a joint session of the planning commission and the city council. I think that would have a much better back and forth and questioning. I also want to thank all the commissioners for the questions you've asked. I think it helped improve the presentation and exchange of information. Like Commissioner Feng had alluded to, I don't understand, and I, maybe the staff can clarify it. If LOS can't be used for SEQA and SEQA drives mitigations, how can the city use LOS at all? And in what case do you do it? How does it, how can you use LOS to reduce impacts? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Peggy. And I am not seeing any other members of the public with their hands raised. Just pause for a moment. Right, okay, so seeing no further questions from the public, we'll close the public comment period.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Chair Moore, we did receive a message in our mailbox.
Excellent, thank you.
I did forward it to you and also will be incorporated into the record. I'll go ahead and read that. It's from Jennifer Griffin. She says, Dear Planning Commission, I think that we should keep LOS in the studies of any upcoming projects. LOS has been used for many years in the studies of new projects that may impact adjacent areas around the project and traffic load on streets and intersections. LOS is understood by much of the public, excuse me. It has been used in studying the ramifications of large projects in our city and other cities. I would prefer that LOS be retained in the analysis and study of upcoming projects. VMT is not understood well by the public. It is an unknown entity. Excuse me, let me get to the rest of my page here. I remember in the study sessions on SB 743 last year that it was determined that a city could have LOS analysis and plans of a project as well as the new VMT. I think that Cupertino should keep LOS in their project analysis on new projects as well as having the new VMT. LOS is extremely valuable in determining traffic load and how intersections are affected by new especially high-density projects. Much of the public already understands how LOS works. There is no reason to take away a tool that the public already knows and can understand. Please retain LOS in any studies of projects being proposed for Cupertino. It gives the residents one more trusted tool to understand the implications and ramifications of new especially high-density projects on streets, traffic load, and potential intersection congestion. I believe LOS to be an excellent tool to judge potential traffic load on streets and that it should remain, excuse me, in project reports. Thank you sincerely, Jennifer Griffin.
All right, thank you. And with that, we've closed the public comments. And are there any further clarifying questions from the commissioners? And I do want to, just regarding LOS, if Dan perhaps could answer or clarify a question that I have. So it's my understanding that you could have an intersection which is level of service, say B, but your experience of that intersection could be that you're coming from it in, going in through it at a direction where your experience is like a D. And whereas the other, because traffic could be directional through that intersection, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so when we talk about vehicle level of service and what's typically presented in analysis, it's an average of the entire intersection operation. So what you just described is, we do calculate each movement, but we present the average of the intersection. So it does depend on the movement you're on.
Right, okay, great.
I thought there was a directional element to that calculation. There isn't a directional element to that calculation?
There is, and this could get pretty detailed pretty quick. But the, how vehicles approach the intersection and use the available time for each of those approaches does have a direct effect on the overall operations. So there are conditions where some approaches could have very few vehicles and others a lot of vehicles, and they define most of the delay for the intersection.
Okay, any further questions? I have a couple of requests, and that would be if we could have pros and cons of the PDAs having different thresholds. This was something Commissioner Feng brought up. I'd also like to know the pros and cons of the, of banking. I think that's interesting. And of San Jose's, it doesn't have to be specifically San Jose's, but having protected intersections. Pros and cons for that. And, and I hope that the, the examples of the Costco, it doesn't have to be Costco, but I thought that discussion was really interesting. Some examples about that and retail effects of having more retail, what that could do, and office.
Yeah, actually, if I could, if I could weigh on that one as well. I think that there was an interesting question there about, you know, is the effect of adding a, you know, an intermediate store, does that have the effect of net increase or decrease? So I'd be curious how that's actually, how that's actually been handled in the world kind of to date, just to understand how that analysis would be done. I think that's, I think that's what Chair Moore was saying as well.
Yes, I think it's really interesting. I think we all seem to be in agreement about wanting to see level of service. It was my understanding that it would end up in the appendices of the EIR, but it's, you know, it's a really great question. What are we going to do with that data? What can we do with it? Is there an answer for that question? I mean, are we just going to be collecting it? We're going to know the levels of service of these intersections. We'll know that some are going to get worse, but we can't mitigate based on that. So why would we want to continue collecting that?
Sure. If you, if I, if I could try to, if I could attempt to answer that by asking Dan a question, forgive me. But I apologize, my first initial response to that question, I don't think was very good. But it's my understanding that SB 743 prevents us from using it in a level of service in environmental review. But that it doesn't prohibit us from having it within our general plan as a development standard. So, Dan, could you correct me if I'm misstating this? But it's my understanding that we can still use LOS in the decision-making process. If, for example, a project comes along that were to blow up a particular intersection. It just can't be discussed within the environmental review. It has to be looked at through the VMT lens. Is that correct, Dan? Do you mind grading me on my answer?
Happy to do that. So we cannot use vehicle level service to identify an environmental impact in the SEQA process, right? Vehicle level service still has benefit. It could be used as a performance measure in your general plan. There's certain kind of rules that go with any performance standard that you include in your general plan, so you'd have to consider those. But vehicle level service can also be used more as a design or operational tool. Say, for example, a project goes in and you need to size a storage pocket, you know, some, some space for vehicles to, to hold while other vehicles pass. It could still be used for that. So, you know, it could fit in a couple different places. It could be in your general plan as a stated policy or performance measure. That's potentially a higher bar than if you put it in kind of the operational analysis category that I mentioned as the other option.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Are there any further questions from the commissioners?
I would only just comment that, you know, there was an intent in, you know, in the Senate bill. You know, so I think that addressing how that tracks, you know, how, what we're proposing here with, you know, how that tracks with, with the intent is useful as well, just for people to understand what's happening. I think that, you know, LOS is an interesting thing because, because the, the problem here is when something is driven into F minus as a result of something which is allowable because of VMT, that's something you definitely, you definitely want to know about. And I think that although that wouldn't stop a project from being approved on EIR grounds, you know, that does, that does at least open the door to having it, you know, discussion. When there's a discussion about, you know, about the terms of the development agreement, you know, that that could be something that would be addressed. I think it's useful in that respect. But I don't think it's going to stop something from, you know, we have, we have kind of E minus intersections now. So, you know, some of those, I think, will turn to BF.
Is this something that we would want the, the public information officer to, you know, as, as November approaches and it's going to city council, have it advertised as educational for the public so that other individuals who might be interested in this, it's pretty technical. But is, you know, is it something that we want to bring more members of the public in to be educated on? Or is this too, too much, too much into the weeds for, for, for people? What do you think?
Our plan, our plan is on promoting it and certainly noticing the council meeting, but also working with the PIO to, to share our website with educational materials. And we figure for people that it's over their head, they'll just ignore it. And those that are really interested, like the people that took the time to comment tonight, will have more resources available to them and our contact information if they have questions, of course.
Okay, excellent. And I was wondering, I've heard that there, there was an approval for the interchange Wolf 280 improvements. Is that, I don't, I don't know how that could work into it, but just to let people know that that, that that went through. And yeah, that would, that might be helpful. Great. Anything out, Commissioner Takashi?
Yeah, just one more question. I think there's, there's somewhat consensus that we do want to retain LOS as it impacts our intersection, just so we understand what a project will do to local traffic as opposed to VMT. But what are the actions we can take if there's a project that, from a VMT standpoint, and I know it's a scenario can be calculated or is feasible, but isn't necessarily a large VMT impact, but is a traffic impact? So we can't really use an EIR as a mitigating factor. Is this, is it part of just the development agreement that we would incorporate that there'd be some level of traffic mitigation? That's.
Do I speak?
I think to respond to that particular point about traffic, that the, the real intent of SB 743 is to shift the focus from the impact to drivers to the impact of driving. So I think that that may not be possible. So it's, it's really shifting the lens from looking at intersections to looking at a holistic.
But, but, and it's rational, logical that that's the intent. However, we are saying that we're, for all intents and purposes, going to be keeping LOS, which means we're not going to be shifting that mindset. What is our course of action if we believe that a project is going to have a significant LOS impact and a minimal VMT impact, right? So you can't use an EIR because you can't use LOS in the AR. What's, what's the city's course of action to rectify that situation or address a mitigating element?
That's a good question. So hypothetically, if we were to set sort of the standards in the general plan, right? Like Dan was mentioning, we had the two options in the, if, if we retain LOS through a general plan, the first example he gave was a sort of a balled-out turning lane, and the second was just a straight cap. In terms of recourse of action, I'd have to defer to Dan if we, if we, the city were to set a cap. I believe it would be like a development standard. Can you speak to that, Dan? It may be a little bit too hypothetical, but he, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it is tricky to talk in general terms in this case. But the, the possible outcomes are, if you have it in your general plan, that's a measure, a performance measure that you have to find ways to maintain, just by the nature of general plan guidelines and rules. If it's in your kind of operational kind of requirements, you're using it for storage pockets, that sort of thing. That would tend to be something that would be associated with a specific project and would be a part of a development agreement or some mechanism like that. So those are kind of the two pieces. So I think perhaps the thing, when we have numbers around the VMT, what is the, the threshold that achieves city goals? And perhaps that's the threshold that is no new VMT on the roadway system, you know, and that can be a proxy for level of service. So, you know, I think we'll just have to see what the, the numbers start to tell us.
Does that mean that you could potentially, in order to have these projects have consistency with the general plan, which I would assume that's what you were driving at, that you could have a table which has all the intersections in the whole city and it has a level of service to be maintained for each and every one? And that would be a general plan objective standard, a table that would, that would still have to be maintained even though levels of service couldn't, aren't part of the SEQA process? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's, in concept, yes.
That seems to kind of contradict what the state was trying to do, but.
Yes, and that's where the challenge becomes. If you're going to introduce a policy like that, you'd have to do a SEQA analysis on it. And potentially that analysis may find that you would increase VMT. So you'd have to work through those, those findings. So there's a component of setting your policy and then the effect of that policy on the environment. So when we talk about vehicle level of service, there's a point we, we transition from operational improvements, something that's just very localized, to something that adds capacity, right? Adds vehicle capacity and induces additional vehicle travel. So that's the threshold that we'd have to figure out if we use levels.
Would you happen to know if in 2014, if there would have been, I believe, Farren Pierce did our EIR for the traffic for the general plan update that happened? Pierce did our EIR for the traffic for the general plan update that happened? And at that time, they studied 2 million square feet of office at one location, and if that were no longer there, the traffic impacts could be quite a bit less. So this might be something that we're going to end up looking at down the road, you know? If that 2 million or nearly 2 million doesn't materialize, our traffic situation locally could actually be quite a bit better than we expected or not. Not sure. It's just kind of a hypothetical thought coming down the road. Okay, so it looks like we have no further questions, and I want to thank Dan and Chris for educating us on this very complicated coming change that we're having. And then, so now we're going to move on to item three postponements. We have a postponement, municipal code amendment to chapter 5.48, mobile vendor to consider updates to definitions and regulations. And this has been postponed to the October 13, 2020, meeting. And now we move on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. And we have some attendees. I currently do not see any hands raised. So we will move on to written communications. And Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications?
We received written communication earlier in the day that I forwarded to you all and be included in the packet after the meeting, and it was in regards to the study session item.
Excellent. All right, thank you. And we have nothing on consent calendar. We move to public hearings. Item four, subject: Consider Municipal Code Amendments to CMC Chapter 10.48, Community Noise Control, to Regulate Leaf Blowers to Implement the Fiscal Year 2020-2021 City Council Work Program items related to ordinance updates on gas-powered leaf blowers. Application number MCA 2020-002. Applicant: City of Cupertino. Location: Citywide. Continued from September 15. Recommended action: That the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing and adopt the draft resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance to, one, find that the proposed action is exempt from SEQA, and, two, recommend the approval of amendments to Chapter 10.48, Community Noise Control, for leaf blower regulations per the draft resolution. Tentative city council hearing date is October 20, 2020, and we'll begin with a staff report.
Yes, good evening, Chair Moore and Planning Commission. I'd like to introduce Jeff Samora, who's going to present this item for us tonight. As you know, the leaf blower ordinance is on the current city council work program and was added just in the past couple of months. So with that, I hand it over to Jeff Samora.
Thanks, Pio. Good evening, everyone. As you had mentioned, I will be doing a presentation on our proposed leaf floor regulations. If I could share my screen. All right. You guys can see that. Okay. Okay, great. Yeah, again, good evening, everyone. And just a little bit of background on this. This is part of, as you had mentioned, the 2020-2021 City Council Work Program item. This did come about as a result of growing noise concerns from residents. And really, the intent of this item is to adopt the floor regulations similar to those of neighboring jurisdictions such as Saratoga, Palo Alto, Los Catos. So our current regulations, there are no ban or noise standards specific to leaf floors, gas-powered or otherwise. These devices are generally regulated under CMC Chapter 10.48, Community Noise Control, which limits the hours of operation for what's quoted as landscape maintenance activities. There's no definition in there, but it has been interpreted and enforced to include use of all motorized gardening equipment, including leaf floors. This chapter also includes regulations on the operating hours depending on the time of day, including holidays, as well as noise levels depending on daytime and nighttime hours. Next, just wanted to present a little bit of data on the current enforcement of leaf floors within the city. Noise violations are currently reported to code enforcement. And a review of landscape maintenance-related cases within the city over a five-year period from January 2015 to July 2020 yielded 27 complaints, 15 of those which were specific to leaf board noise and hours of operation. The remaining cases are nonspecific, likely miscellaneous motorized landscape equipment like lawn mowers and edgers and such. So when considering how and what language we wanted to incorporate to enforce the floor regulations, we turned to the surrounding jurisdictions and what their leaf floor regulations are. So in our comparison study, you will notice that there's a few jurisdictions such as Palo Alto, Los Altos, and Los Catos that specifically prohibit gas leaf floors, while other cities such as Sunnyvale and Saratoga don't specifically prohibit gas-powered blowers, but instead refer to gas or electric blowers that are ANSI certified or equivalent. With the exception of Los Altos and Los Catos, gas blowers are allowed in all other non-residential zones, likely to account for challenges that using an electric leaf blower would have on larger sites such as schools, commercial, and office properties. All jurisdictions do set noise standards or allowable blowers, the norm being 65 decibels measured at 50 feet from the source, the source being a leaf blower. So the reason for the gas ban that a few of those cities have enforced is based on studies determining that electric leaf blowers tend to be generally quieter than gas leaf blowers. One study had showed that gas-powered leaf blowers have a greater low frequency compared to battery-electric, which means that lower the frequency, it's able to transmit and remain audible over longer distance, and then thus having greater adverse impact on the surrounding community. It's able to travel more readily through windows and glass doors, as well as an analysis of perceived loudness by the human ear can be heard up to several times louder than battery-electric counterparts in both indoor and outdoor settings. So in addition to the isolated floors and the decibel levels, we also observed operational hours between jurisdictions, with Cupertino's operational hours at the bottom for reference. So those card times are relatively similar for all the days compared to other jurisdictions, with weekday hours similar to Sunnyvale's hours of operations, but with some reduced hours on weekends and the holidays. So now moving on to our proposed regulations for Cupertino. Similar to the surveyed jurisdictions, we are proposing to set limits to noise levels at 65 decibels, measured at 50 feet from the source, and allowing only certified leaf floors, which should be defined as being ANSI certified, verifiable through manufacturer stickers such as the one on the screen for ease of identification, or an electric leaf floor equivalent with similar noise levels and verified through manufacturer specs. Certified electric blowers will be allowed in all zones, and certified gas leaf floors will be allowed in all zones except for single-family duplex and triplex developments. The proposed regulations that you see here are a bit of a hybrid between the City of Palo Alto's and the City of Saratoga's regulations in that Palo Alto restricts gas leaf blowers in residential zones, but not in non-residential. Saratoga allows the citywide use of what they also define as certified leaf blowers. And then there are no changes to the operational hours. Staff is recommending a two-year grace period before this becomes effective, starting when the ordinance is adopted, to allow time for residents and landscapers to familiarize themselves with these new regulations and acquire the permitted equipment. During this time, staff is also going to develop and carry out an outreach plan, including citywide postcard mailers, notifying local nurseries and landscape companies, putting a notice in the Cupertino scene, putting an FAQ page on a website, et cetera. So Saratoga is the most recent neighboring jurisdiction to adopt leaf floor regulations. They did something similar in terms of a two-year grace period when they passed their ordinance back in October 2017, which went into effect just last year in October. And this outreach program, post-adoption, had seen some good effect. And during this time, the city will continue to enforce no lease violations for landscape maintenance activities under the current community noise control ordinance until the effective date. And then staff finds that the project is exempt from SEQA by Section 1506-1, B3, which can be seen with certainty that the proposed regulation will have no possible significant effect on the environment, as well as Section 15308, which is an item adopted to ensure maintenance, restoration, enhancement, or protection of the environment. In addition, there was a notice of public hearing, site notice and legal ad placed in the newspaper at least 10 days prior to this hearing. And the agenda was posted on the city's official notice bulletin board at least 40 days prior to the hearing and posted on the city Cupertino's website 4 days prior to hearing. In conclusion, staff recommends that the public hearing is connected and the planning commission adopts the draft resolution recommending that council find the action exempt from SEQA and approve amendments to Chapter 10.48, Community Noise Control, for the floor regulations. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you...
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commissioners? Yes, Vice Chair Wong?
You're muted.
You're muted. Right. You're muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Can you hear me now? So I'm completely flabbergasted that something with 15 violations over five years would have this much staff time, whatever it was, that we devoted this much staff time to this. I know it's good work, Jeff. I mean, nothing on your end, but like, who the heck, why do we create these kind of regulations over people for like, I mean, come on. Someone could have just told their neighbor, hey, you know, stop, you know, don't put this thing up at 7:00 AM or 6:00 AM with a leaf blower. I mean, I can't believe we spent this much staff time on something this small. Like, what are other items that have more, like, have higher frequency of complaints for code enforcement? I mean, give me some range here, like, you know, leaf blowers versus, I don't know, cars parked in the wrong direction? I mean, what? I'm just really curious. Sorry about that, but I'm just really curious. I know you did a good job on this, and you followed all the other things for everyone else, but I'm just like, why in the world are we even going to have this regulation? I'm trying to reduce the number of regulations people are under, and like, we're coming up with more. It's driving me nuts.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, I'm actually in full agreement. Really, to me, this strikes me from the standpoint, well, first of all, just the relative low frequency does point to it's not a problem, so why regulate it? But further, you know, I understand the rationale in terms of, okay, it's a noise nuisance, but in order to effectively do yard work, you need a leaf blower, unless you're going to require, you know, just, it's a needed part of doing the job. And landscapers, if all the cities around us, which it looks like they are, are adopting these requirements, they are going to have to get these certified blowers to 65 dB at 50 feet, which I have no idea what, if it's a muffler that's being utilized on the two-stroke or how they're actually achieving that. But nonetheless, I think the outcome will be you're going to have compliance just because a landscaper isn't going to be working strictly in Cupertino. They're going to be working in adjacent cities as well because they have multiple clients, and I think that's going to happen just by nature of regulation around us. But it bothers me just from the standpoint of inconveniencing a resident for somebody that's trying to make a living at a pretty low wage and doing the best they can. It really irritates me and people to call and complain. You know, if it's a gross violation of somebody at 7:00 in the morning right outside your front door, that seems legitimate, but, you know, cut the guy a break. I mean, he's working, and chances are, he is working on Saturdays because, you know, they need to work as many hours, as many jobs and houses as they can, and this just is a regulation that makes it harder for them to do their job. So completely agree.
Mr. Feng?
No. Well, I also will comment that I find it interesting that it was a small number, the small number of complaints were driving this to the point where it got added to the work plan. You know, I think actually, I would actually be more concerned, if I were to be concerned about something, it was about, you know, a leaf blower in particular is just generating exhaust to blow leaves around, so I would have more of an interest in looking at two-stroke engines rather than, yeah, two-stroke engines rather than whether, you know, specifically leaf blowers. So I had a number of questions around, you know, were people not complaining about lawn mowers and things like that? The only other comment I had to this, it looks like maybe this one's going to go down in flames. I have no problem with it either way. I would actually say that I would consider, if you were to move forward with legislation like this, I would look at putting a lot size factor on this as well. You know, we had, in our last meeting, we had an unusually large lot, you know, we had a hearing for our house with an unusually large lot. There are many houses in Cupertino that have lots that are larger than some of the public parks, so, you know, in that particular case, I suspect nobody's going to care, you know, way up on Lindy Lane or something, nobody's really going to care if it's a gas or electric leaf blower. But just to be, you know, if this were to move forward, I would actually look at putting, you know, some restriction, like, you know, if it's less than one acre, then these regulations would apply. That's it for my comments.
Okay. Well, my question, well, I've got a couple, but it might be more for staff. And, you know, what do we do procedurally if the city council has a work plan item and it ends up on our desk and we don't really agree with what they have asked for? And, you know, we're supposed to recommend the approval of amendments to the Community Noise Control for Leaf Blower Regulations. They have asked for us to do this, and how can we make findings, you know, that we don't agree with it? Or do we need to say that we agree with it in that it's, you know, that it is according to SEQA, it's exempt from SEQA, and approve the amendments, and then also make a statement that while, I don't know if you understand what I'm trying to say, but if we don't like it, it doesn't mean that we have findings that say, I mean, aren't we going to need to have findings to oppose this? Do you have some guidance on that?
Yeah, the planning commission is within its right to decline, to recommend the ordinance as drafted, or as Commissioner Feng suggested, you could conditionally approve it with some recommended changes.
Okay. So, and then unfortunately, what I dug into was something from Burlingame, and they have a leaf blower ordinance, and they have... And they have a leaf blower ordinance and they have a machinery list. So they've got three extra pages, I found. It's a 65 decibel machinery list. And it says Burlingame's leaf blower ordinance requires that all blowers be certified at 65 decibels either by testing or by manufacturer rating. Any machine on this list will be passed without testing by Burlingame's Department of Public Works Department. That, the testing part, I, it looks like it would add a layer of work for our public works department if we were going to have them testing. I don't know that we're in that business, but I was wondering if, if anyone had looked into the idea of having a list. And then I'd like to hear, and I think I'm asking for you to repeat, Jeff, about what was going on with the difference between the electric and the, the gas-powered leaf blower? It sounded like you were trying to say that the gas-powered leaf blower noise actually is more disruptive, even though it might have the same decibel rating? I think I heard that.
Correct. So one of the studies that compared the differences between gas-powered leaf blowers and battery-electric had determined that the frequencies emitted from gas leaf blowers are at a lower level to the point where it actually can, that noise can extend further in distance and penetrate through certain windows and glass doors, more so than electric leaf blowers.
Okay, and that's, that's the reason why you made the distinction between single-family duplex and maybe triplexes versus larger. Okay, so what happens if you've got a condominium complex and they are, they're bothered by the leaf blower noise and they don't count as a triplex? It's bigger. So is that something their homeowners association would be allowed to ban it on their own? And then what happens for an apartment building?
They would have that right. So the way that the draft is, the draft ordinance is written is that single-family duplexes and triplexes would not be allowed, but multifamily and mixed-use developments would be. So those larger multifamily properties with larger lots would still be allowed to use gas or electric.
And if I may interject, you are right, Chair Moore. Basically, the HOAs can prohibit the individual property owners from using gas-powered leaf blowers if they wish to.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, just clarification. I think you presented this and I just can't remember the detail, but this is only applying to residential and duplexes? Is that, is that, what is this applying to again? You could just refresh my.
Yeah, so residential developments, single-family duplexes.
Okay.
Just one quick clarification. The 65 decibel limit on noise standard applies across all zones, no matter which zoning district you're in. The further restriction of disallowing gas-powered leaf blowers only applies to single-family duplexes and triplexes.
Right, and I assume the city is going to abide by its own code in this particular case because the city has used gas leaf blowers in the parks, so.
Absolutely.
So there's potentially costs, right? You're going to have to retrofit all the equipment with that. So just throwing that out there, just so people know.
I do have a question. I'm curious as to which council member was sponsoring this work plan initiative. Do we know?
I'm sorry, I cannot recall. I don't believe it's recorded on the work program.
No problem. I just didn't want to offend anyone that might have a real reason for this. I mean, I couldn't figure out, and if it was someone that really was advocating for it, I would love to know who that was, so.
So how do you enforce this? You know, say, someone's out, sounds loud, it's Saturday, code enforcement isn't working. What happens?
So it would be enforced pretty much the same way that it currently is now. Usually these complaints come in through online complaints or through a call-in. Usually a warning will be sent to the property owner on the property. It'll just be a warning the first time. If there are multiple complaints on the same property, at that time, code enforcement would try to go out and meet with that landscaper or the property owner and give them a verbal warning. And it can.
It is also, if I may interject again, I believe it is also okay to call the sheriff's department and that the sheriff's deputies could also conduct enforcement.
Okay, so you're looking for the sheriff or code enforcement to figure out if they had something louder than 65 decibels after they've, the landscaper's long gone? I, it just seems challenging.
It would really be a notification to the property owner. So in the event that the, the activities are done by the time code enforcement or sheriffs are able to go onsite and witness it firsthand, they do inform the property owner who then notifies their landscaper. Now, these are the regulations and I don't want to get fined, so.
Landscaper tends to come back, you know, at some point. And if he doesn't come back, then you haven't got a problem, so.
There's decibel meters you can use on your, on your iPhone too, if you really want to know how loud it is, worst case. I mean, some neighbor could kind of record that, I guess.
Right, or you could use that if you're using a leaf blower, but you need to know how much attenuation you get over 50 feet.
Yeah.
In terms of.
You don't have a calibrated, you don't have a calibrated microphone either.
Yeah.
Actually, the sheriffs do carry a sound level meter, so they, you know.
They do, actually.
They're going to need to pace off 50 feet and stand 50 feet away in order to actually make a legitimate measurement.
I think this is like, like many of these kind of regulations, you know, there will be egregious violators. Somebody who has, you know, a broken piece of equipment and they come every week and that's where, you know, that's where these come into play.
Right. So why, why doesn't the current noise ordinance do the job, I guess is the question?
A good question.
Well, technically, leaf blowers are kind of wrapped under landscape maintenance activities. So it, in effect, is already being enforced. There's just no language specific to the floor regulations.
I, I think in a number of towns, this is actually driven by wanting to get, you know, gas, you know, gas and particularly two-stroke engines have, have less use of that. And that, you know, I think for many people, that's much more, the exhaust that's being generated is much more a problem than the, the sound.
I think with Fung, it sounds like our neighboring jurisdictions are going to force most of the landscapers into this anyways. So I think, you know, we probably don't need to add to our regulatory burden. I think one of the things I'm going to look forward to in future sessions is how to keep reducing our regulatory burden. So, and I agree with what Commissioner Takahashi said about the individual who's actually trying to make a living that's going to have to go back. And I, I, I think we should try to make it a little bit easier for folks, especially given the economic conditions.
Okay, so are we, we are ready to open this up for public comment? Okay, and first I see Peggy Griffin. Okay, Peggy, are you there?
Yes.
All right, welcome Peggy. I'm starting the timer. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, commissioners. Why don't you have a municipal code that applies? I live two houses down from 280 and 65 decibels sounds quiet to me. But yet, a leaf blower you're complaining about. I'm appalled because the way you've got it written, the small individual landscapers that do the small houses, this, this municipal code will apply to. But the big ones, the big landscape companies that do the big apartments and do the city, it doesn't apply to. It seems like if you're going to do it, it applies to everybody uniformly. The other thing is maybe if you are going to do it, you've looked into some kind of rebate program? You know, turn in your gas blower and we will give you, you know, a coupon towards an electric? Anyway, I think that if you're going to implement it, it applies to everybody. Enforcement is easier and it doesn't single out the small landscaper that's doing the small R1 residential homes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Peggy. And I see no one else with their hands raised. Madam Clerk, did you have any written communications during this time?
No, we've not received anything.
Okay, and with that, I'm closing the public comment, public hearing. And do we have any comments from the commissioners?
I think, I think I would just add one. I mean, given the low interest from, you know, the residents, given the low frequency and given the fact that there was not even a lot of public comment, you know, for, for the ordinance, I think I'm probably looking at probably not supporting it at this moment. But I do want to say that the work that staff did, especially Mr. Sumura, it was well, I mean, it was well thought out. And so I think the comparison and the work was there and much appreciated. I'm just kind of appalled that it was actually a work-planned item. So in terms of the resources, given the other priorities we may need to do. So hopefully I've not offended any city council member who actually was supportive of this. But that's where my, where I stand.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, I definitely feel the same way. I mean, if the intent, however, is environmental, i.e. two-stroke engines, that's, that's different from the standpoint of why are you using noise to regulate that as opposed to emissions, right? So that would be another way to, to, if that indeed is the intent. If it's strictly noise, then it doesn't seem very practical. And, and emissions restriction would also be very challenging for any landscaper because now you have to have non-gas-powered lawn mowers and all the other equipment. And the problem that commercial landscapers have is, you know, they're visiting multiple houses and the battery life just isn't there, so they're going to have to have multiple batteries or have access to a generator, which, you know, that's not good, right? You're defeating that purpose. Or that, that, that clients understand and allow the landscaper to charge extra batteries while they're, they're servicing their house. So anyway, just a bunch of random thoughts, but I completely agree with Commissioner Wong that I don't believe this is necessary.
Commissioner Feng?
My only comment here is that, as I said before, I, you know, I, I don't particularly feel that this is worthy of advancing, but I don't have a problem if, you know, it's structured in such a way, the intent was clear. I do wonder whether it would be worth it to make a, you know, here are five reasons why, as a, as a, as a commission, that we said that we oppose this. That may be worth bringing up just so that there's not a go-watch-a-half-hour or hour-long hearing to find out why it was that we did this. You know, it may just be worth saying, here, here are the, here are the reasons. Economic impact, lack of, you know, lack of resident complaints, you know, and make it really clear.
That's a really interesting idea, Commissioner Feng. So we could, we could have economic impact. I really like what Peggy Griffin was saying regarding it harms the small business owners. And we could add that, you know.
Code enforcement also is another one. Code enforcement challenges associated with code enforcement.
Code enforcement challenges, okay.
And the fact that other cities, other cities will eventually get there so that these will be phased out over time.
Free ride.
It is a free ride, actually, that's true.
Okay, so we're going to enumerate these. We have the code enforcement, the difficulty to enforce, economic impacts harming small businesses during COVID-19. And there's some inequity about the large landscapers not being equally affected by it.
I don't know if COVID is necessarily a factor. I think that in general, what's happening is the people who would be working on single-family homes are impacted here, not the people who are working on commercial property.
Well, if we're thinking about that they would have to get new equipment during a pandemic and maybe they lost business, that's why I put that in there was just to add, add to, to the reason. The lack of number of complaints was also mentioned. And if the intent is environmental, remove the gas-powered engines entirely as opposed to having this, you know, two-tier option.
Although I think that that actually would be my main motivation behind looking at changing the regulations, I would actually leave that one out because I, I think that the intent here of the regulation was that there is a relatively standard, you know, industry-standard label that they can look at to see whether the device is qualifying or not. I don't think that that exists for, for, you know, gas-powered lawn mowers or gas-powered leaf blowers such that some are okay and others are not. So it just becomes a question of whether you're trying to get rid of gas, gas-powered equipment entirely.
Right, right. And like I mentioned, the Burlingame list, I mean, they have a, they have a list we could, you know, if they want, if the city wants to encourage moving away from the really noisy ones. And there are noisy old electric ones. I used to have one and I got one of the quieter ones that the city could provide this information as well.
I like that idea, Chair Moore and Commissioner Feng. I actually like that idea. Maybe what we can do is put something on the city website and take advantage of the work that staff has done to say, hey, if you're thinking about, you know, being more environmental, here are some suggestions in landscaping. And that could be put on as kind of an informational basis and point people to that as a suggestion, so.
I would actually be opposed to having a specific list of, of, you know, this specific device. On one hand, that that's good for, you know, it's easy to get a thumbs up or thumbs down, but the problem is that it will require additional staff time to maintain over time. And if what you're doing is you're, you're making that decision based on a industry-standard certification, then just make the certification the guide point.
I mean, it's harder to put a list, but I think, I think some of the suggestions that were made about hours and things like that, just for people to be considerate. So kind of, it's kind of like a be kind, kind of a theme on the website that says, you know, be kind to your fellow neighbors. Here's some things you can think about with landscaping, leaf blowers and noise. Might be something useful as well.
Yeah, the important takeaway is if you have a choice, if you're looking to purchase one, then looking for one that's less than 65 dB would be great and that there's a way to determine that. And also that, you know, that the impact may be less from an electric one than a gas one.
Why, why hasn't the state mandated this requirement? It seems like that would make it a lot easier if they just, in California, said, we're no longer going to allow more than 65 decibel leaf blowers or lawn equipment. I don't know. It seems like that could be a faster way to get this taken care of than doing it this way. And it doesn't have the distinction at that point between gas and electric.
Chair Moore, if I may, if I may interrupt really quick. I think Jeff might have, Jeff Sumura might have something to add about the emissions piece that you guys are, that the commission is discussing right now. But on a separate note, I just wanted to add, it is entirely, you know, in the commission's purview to kind of modify the proposal. And so if, if the commission wasn't interested in restricting single-family triplexes and duplexes to only electric leaf floors, then it is certainly within their purview to limit the decibel limit, but allow all kinds of leaf floors in general. But I know Jeff has some information on the emissions piece.
So on that note, can, can one of our recommendations just be to fall back on the noise ordinance, which already exists and this fits in?
Commissioner Takahashi, I believe that the noise ordinance says that there are no limitations on noise for landscape maintenance activities, but Jeff can confirm that. Like, that particular thing is exempt from any limitations. But Jeff, could you please confirm that?
Yeah, that's, that's true. So during allowable hours for landscape maintenance activities, those limits to noise levels, if reasonable means are used to help reduce those noise levels, then they're exempt from those limits.
So defined reasonable, what does that mean? Does that mean as long as it's not some faulty piece of equipment that's obviously above and beyond a noise level that's acceptable? Is that what that means?
Yeah, it's going to be case by case, but it basically includes the government using. using appropriate mufflers or noise bafflers, buying the equipment only when it's necessary, et cetera.
Okay, so we could, on the one side, we could leave the 65 decibel municipal code change and then remove the requirement that residential, single-family duplexes and triplexes, that it would be prohibited there. So that, that you've got the table for Attachment Three, Page Three. Instead of saying prohibited, it would say permitted, like the non-residential and multifamily. And then two years down the road, the city could change that. And it could also be impacted by any technological changes that they have in these, you know, these yard care equipment as the companies realize that this is where, this is where it's headed. We're going all electric. You better get the, get a good product out there for these companies to use. And then, and then two years down the road, we, we, we say it's, it has to be electric everywhere, in fact. I mean, so we can re, we can revisit it. We can make it less restrictive right now and then revisit it in two years.
That's right. We would be restricting only the decibel limits, but not the type of leaf floor.
Okay. And there's nothing saying in two years, we, we don't get rid of, we, we completely eliminate it. And, and you could plan on eliminating it across the board and have that be a recommendation to city council that we're going to permit the gas-powered leaf floors everywhere below this decibel amount. And then we're, the plan is to eliminate it everywhere. Okay.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's an option.
We're introducing a plan in two years to eliminate all gas leaf floors? I mean, that's, that's completely different from the scope of what we're talking about here.
They can, oh, cities, the city council two years from now could revisit this if there's, if there's, if the technology is advanced enough.
Why would you want to put that there? Well, just if, if it's a need in the future to, and, and, and a desire to do this, it'll be done, but.
If you get another 10 people to complain.
Right.
I, I, I think that what we're, what we're really, you know, we're not, we're not getting paid by the resolution we pass here. I think that, I think we ought to just not take action. If two years from now, you know, there's been a revolution in lawn care equipment, then, you know, then we can make a change then, right? Then, then you can take that, take it up at that time.
I can't say that I dislike the, the 65 decibel limit and, and having the hours. It sounds as though that's actually a, a bit of a loophole that we have in the municipal code right now, if I'm understanding what Jeff said correctly.
So the hours already exist. We're not changing the hours of operation. The only thing that we were suggesting is establishing a decibel limit for leaf floors in particular. Other landscape maintenance equipment still has the existing standard, which is the reasonable standard.
So is there, is there any support for having a, a decibel limit of 65 then?
I have no support for it, but I'm also going to go out and measure what mine sounds like because I thought I replaced mine to be quieter. I'm very curious, so.
I'm opposed to that as well. I, I think as this is, as we've kind of gotten deeper into this, I, I really feel like, you know, there's not a pressing need. There's no public, there's no public, you know, strong need expressed by the public for, for us to take action at this time.
Right, definitely. The, the, with three complaints a year, that's pretty, pretty low and seems manageable from the standpoint of, without adding another regulation to the books.
Vice Chair Wong?
I was going to create a social media campaign to see if we get it to six complaints a year, but I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just kidding. I, I don't have a support for this. I, I just think we, where we can reduce regulations and where we can add regulations that actually can make some differences where people care about, I think that's what we should focus on. And, and also staff as well, because it's, you know, I, I think there's some good suggestions there that can be repurposed, but I'm, I'm not in favor of any regulation here.
Okay, so we had previously talked about having a, a list for why we would recommend this for denial. And did we want to go over that list or is staff already got those items? Or do you want to hear them again?
I think it would be nice to have them summarized again, just so we can make the final notes.
Okay, so.
Chair, if I may contextualize what you're about to read, I, I think where these would go, in theory, you could, you could say that this, this regulation is consistent with the, the, it meets the finding that it's SEQA exempt, but then what you're about to list, I believe would go under the public health and welfare finding in, which is the second finding. And I, based on Commissioner's comments so far, it sounds like you would be finding, among other things, that it does not support the, the welfare of the, of the workers. That's how you could fit into the findings as drafted.
Okay, well, that's where you lose me then, because I, I don't feel that we can make that finding.
So the alternative to that is that we are providing a list of information that we would put into the minutes, that we are putting into the minutes along with a vote that will say that we are not, you're not approving this. So that doesn't, that doesn't speak to the SEQA element, but I don't know that we need to.
I think we can just vote to not approve this. And then as a separate item, just make a recommendation to staff with here's, here's the rationale.
Seth? Okay, so here is my concern, if we could pull up the part, there would be findings in the resolution. So we need to pull up the resolution and I want to see what the findings are specifically, if we're saying that having sound over 65 decibels is, is we're not finding that that has a safety issue. Because I think we might be getting ourselves into some murky water.
I don't think anybody said that.
I know. I just, I want to see how, what our findings look like so that we're not, so that we're, we're all good. Just want to double check.
You know, we need findings to approve this. I don't know that we need findings to say that we didn't approve it.
You, you, you don't really? I, the reason I raised that is because the chair asked, asked how we would address the findings as written.
I, I, I understand. And I think if we were to rewrite this, to, to, for instance, pick up the SEQA element, you know, I think everybody does acknowledge that this is, SEQA does not apply. But I think that we're basically going to say, you know, the document, the resolution is as presented, we'll vote on it and then say no. And then, and then whether it's a formal attachment, that's something that we vote on, or whether we just say, hey, these are the notes to staff, so that somebody can understand why, why we came to the decision we did. I think that that's fine.
Okay, so we're still covered by the, the noise ordinance in general, rather than limiting these particular items that are being used. That's correct?
I'm sorry, could you reframe that question or repeat it?
We still, we're still covered by the noise ordinance in the municipal code. We're still.
Correct.
Okay, so it's just a little less specific. Okay, I, I, okay, what's that? Is someone ready to make a motion?
It's been a long time since we made a motion to not approve something. I don't know how this works, actually. I don't even remember.
Actually, I'll do it if you like. You know, I move that we.
Do not recommend, right? Is that, is that the wording we're looking for?
Or we're, we will find that the proposed action is exempt from SEQA, but for item two, we're going to recommend the denial.
I don't know. I don't know whether we should do the SEQA one or not. I think we should not do that. We should, we should look at this, we should put this up for a vote as drafted with no changes and then vote it down.
Okay, sounds good.
I do this. So, so I, I would be willing to make the motion that we, that we consider this as presented for the purpose of, you know, for the purpose of discussion, which we've kind of had already.
All right, go for it.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Give it a go. I think I caught up with all of you guys. We're, we have a motion to deny the item number four.
No, no, motion to consider and then we will vote.
Consider it. And then you can ask us whether we, we vote.
Vice Chair Wang?
I haven't said nay in a while. Nay, there we go.
Commissioner Feng?
Nay.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Nay.
And Chair Moore?
Nay.
Okay, the motion is passes, well, 401 with Commissioner Sexy the absent.
Okay, but.
Is it fails?
It's, I think it's 041.
Yeah.
It fails 041.
41, yes.
Having done that, what can we do to, is this going to go to, to city council? And what can we do to provide them with information about why we did this?
I think we had a, I think you had a list of a number of items.
Right.
Four, five items. And I think that we ought to give that, present that to staff.
Right. And then staff can put that in the staff report to the city council. These were the, these were the rationale.
Okay, so I'm going to go through the list real quick. Just help me out if you want to change the wording. So one item was the difficulty with code enforcement of this. Another item is that it would harm small business owners inequitably as opposed to the larger landscapers. There is a lack of number of complaints. We were looking at only about three per year. And we felt it was not worthy of advancing. Anything else?
I would move number three to number one. Almost on its own, I think.
Lack of number of complaints.
Probably would have considered, yeah.
Yeah. I think that, I think that was glaring to all of us when we opened up the packet. I think all of us went, turned to the math and came to the same conclusion. Yeah.
Another, I don't know if this is worth putting on it, but, but it does seem like it's just excessive regulation.
I could do, do so. I agree. Any, anyone disagree with that? It looks like overregulation, unnecessary, unnecessary overregulation.
I would, I would say unnecessary regulation.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Great. All right. So with that, we have completed item number four. We have no old business. I know of, no new business. Do we have any staff and commission reports?
None for me.
Okay, any commission reports? Oh, I actually do have a commission report. I attended the mayor's meeting and I did write something up regarding it. One thing I just want to bring up is from the library. They have extended hours to 7:00 PM on Wednesday and Thursday night, which is very interesting. And from the Parks and Rec Commission, they are continuing to look at the Rancho Rinconada Pool area as something that potentially could become part of the city, but it's still, it's under review and that will take some time. And any other commission reports? Nope. Okay, so we are, oh, we've come to the end of our program and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night, thanks everyone.